All right, good evening, everyone. We want to call this Caldwell County Board of Commissioners meeting for October the 12th, 2020 to order. We'd like to welcome everybody who is in attendance this evening in our audience as well as those who are joining us by TV. Our first item will be having our invocation. Pastor Jay Warsley of the First Baptist Church of Granite Falls is going to lead us in that this evening, and we'll follow that with our pledge of allegiance in which Commissioner Jeff Branch will lead us in that.
Father in heaven, we come before you tonight, and it's an extreme privilege, Lord, to have this opportunity today, just to live life, just to be given a chance to walk through our day today, knowing that every gift that we have is from you. Thank you for being our source of wisdom and knowledge and truth, Lord, that everything that's good comes from you. But also thank you, Lord, that we get a chance to be good stewards of what you've given us on this earth, in this town, in this county. And God thanks for the opportunity for that, for the freedom to be able to make decisions and to do what's good for the people of Caldwell County. So again, we honor you for that tonight, Lord. We thank you for being in complete control, even when sometimes looking around us, it doesn't seem that way. But we know that you haven't surrendered your authority, and we are trustworthy, Lord, trusting in your trustworthiness, Lord, of who you are and what you're doing in this world. So again, thank you for who you are tonight, and may we be good stewards and make good decisions, Lord, with what you've given us. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Everyone face the flag, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everyone. Are there any amendments to our agenda this evening?
Mr. Chairman, there are no amendments to the agenda.
No amendments, as reported by our clerks. So what's the pleasure of the board in adopting our agenda this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept this evening's agenda as the county clerk has presented.
Any other comment or discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries unanimously. And our first item on the agenda then is our public hearing section, and the first one is an EDC incentive request for Project Drumstick. Ms. Deborah Murray, our EDC director, is with us this evening. Welcome, and tell us about this drumstick.
Well, I will, but if you'll allow me, I wanted to say thank you first. This past spring, you approved an incentive for Project Georgia, and two weeks ago, the governor announced that project, and it means $120 million for Caldwell County, invested in the southern portion of our county. There were 231 jobs at play, and they're going to construct a 200,000-square-foot highly automated distribution warehouse there in addition to what we already have. So I wanted to say thank you for your commitment to that project. I also want to say thank you to City of Hickory because they partnered with us and they matched what you approved. And if they hadn't done that and you hadn't done it, that project would be in South Carolina or Georgia. So thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you guys and your team that take care of that, Deborah.
Tonight, I'm asking for approvals of incentives of a little bit smaller scale, and none of these projects are startups, but they are just small, expanding companies who are considering Caldwell County for their next operations. Now, the first one is Project Drumstick, which was approved a year ago for local jobs incentives, and they doubled the size of their company since then. Today, they are expanding again and doubling employment as well and relocating to a larger facility in the county. They're requesting $2,000 a job for up to 15 new full-time jobs to be created over the next two years. We are in the process of making application with them for a state building reuse grant. So we would like that to run concurrently if it is awarded. So that is Project Drumstick.
All right, so with that recommendation, I'll open the public hearing, and we don't have anyone here this evening who has chosen to speak, so we will close the public hearing, and I'll ask what the pleasure of the board is in adopting this incentive.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like a motion that we approve the EDC incentive as requested.
All right, any other comment or discussion?
Deborah, when I first looked at that, when I was reading the agenda this week, I got kind of excited because I saw Drumstick, and I thought, hmm, Smithfield Chicken and Barbecue. But then I realized that we're not incentivizing retail.
We don't.
You threw me there with the Drumstick thing, so.
All right. Well, with that, I'll call the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries unanimously. Next is Project M&amp;M and Project Toucan.
Well, we've never presented two projects before together, but we are tonight because these folks want to co-locate in a new facility, new to them, in Caldwell County. They are independent companies. They'll have independent contracts for this, but they do a lot of business together. It makes sense for them to join in this operation. M&amp;M is an Ohio company, and it was established in the late 1990s, and they manufacture textiles. They want to be here because they believe we have a rich textile history, and they can bring some modernization to that process as well as bringing new jobs to Caldwell County. So they plan to add as many as 12 new jobs at that site. And Toucan is an industrial printer, and they were established in the early 1950s in Canada. This would make their third location. They print designs and labels and insignias on many products, including some products provided, fabrics provided by M&amp;M. The company will add as many as eight new full-time positions, and I think in your agenda abstract, I lost track of what I was doing, and at the bottom said six in one part and eight in another. It's eight. So these companies see Caldwell as an excellent next step for their business expansions, and they're both looking for two-year agreements. As they have their building under contract for purchase currently, they have yet to determine if they're going to need a building reuse grant, and they'd like to have that option if it's necessary. So that's why we've asked for two years. So M&amp;M for 12 jobs at $24,000, and Toucan for eight for 16.
All right, and hearing the recommendation, I'll open the public hearing, and no one has signed up again to be here to speak in that public hearing, so I'll close the public hearing and ask what the pleasure of the board is in adopting this request.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the request, incentive request as requested by Ms. Murray.
All right, any other comment or discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries unanimously as well.
Thank you very much.
So thank you, Deborah. Thank you for the hard work that you continue to do in these tough economic times with buildings expanding and jobs coming. We appreciate everything that you guys do over there at the EDC, so.
We appreciate all the help. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Deborah.
Next on our agenda is the reevaluation schedule of values, and basically, I think we just have to entertain a public hearing for that, and so I will open the public hearing for the reevaluation schedule of values, if anybody's here in our audience or has signed up to speak in reference to this schedule. And we don't have anyone signed up. And does anybody here in the audience want to speak? So hearing none, I will close that portion of the public hearing, and that was an opportunity for our public to speak on this reevaluation, so we don't have to have any action, but we will be looking to adopt this on our November the 16th meeting. And so we had to do that prior to our November 16th meeting, and it's been duly advertised, and so we will proceed with that in November. So the next item on our agenda is the Waterfront Club Phase Three Final Platte Approval Request. Our planning director, Ms. Shelley Stevens, is with us here this evening, so hey, Shelley.
Good evening, and thank you for hearing this request from the applicant, actually. I'll be giving the overview, but obviously, it's the applicant's request. So you're aware of this subdivision, Waterfront Club, which is to the west of Connolly Springs Road, and it's adjacent and north of Lake Road Hisps, and currently, they're on Phase Three, and they have submitted a final plat they hope to get approved tonight for recording with the Register of Deeds, and this is the plat. It's in two pages here. That would be the northern section, and that's the southern part there. So this is the western side of the subdivision, and the applicant is Middle Street Residential, and we have a representative here, Jack Daniels, if he would like to present any information to you all as well tonight. I'm not sure if he wants to do that. And another developer working on the project is the Shaw-Tate Group, and the owner of the property is Caldwell Timber LLC. And the current proposal is in the watershed critical and protected areas of the county. Some of it is in just the critical area, and some of it is in the protected area, and that just influences how much you can develop each lot. So 24% if you're not, if you're using curb and gutter, and then up to 36% if you don't use curb and gutter on a site or a property. So typically, people don't have any problem in residential subdivisions with the watershed ordinance because no one's going to develop their property in most cases to an extent that would surpass what's allowed by the watershed ordinance. So that's just something to keep in mind, and there is some floodplain on the site as well on the property. And in this, in this actual plat, in this Phase Three here that they have submitted, there is 521.989 acres in Phase Three. However, they are only hoping to subdivide tonight 393.7 of those acres while they finish up their culvert project they're fixing, which is, if you look in the center of the plat, you can see the stream bed there. That whole area will be subdivided at a later time, approximately 10 lots is what they were hoping to put in there. And this subdivision, as you may recall from the preliminary plat approval process, does contain 99 lots. The whole subdivision has 267 lots, and the whole subdivision has 1,002 acres per their surveyor. The lower half is zoned R20 for, I'm sorry, the upper half is zoned R20 for low-density residential, and then the bottom half is planned unit development zoning, so they can build single-family residential in both of those zones. And so again, tonight, they're just hoping to get this final plat approved, and there is a long process before, you know, we get to this point. There is the preliminary plat approval, which we've been through, and then between the preliminary and final plat approval, they have to meet all of the requirements of the subdivision ordinance that are laid out there. So I have been corresponding back and forth with the engineer and surveyor working on the project as well as the developers, and I've worked with this surveyor many times. He is a very good surveyor, and he just makes the corrections as needed per the subdivision ordinance and asks me any questions he has, as do the developers and the engineer, Robbie Bell, who is also working on this plat. So at the time of submittal to the planning board, everything is due 30 days before things are submitted to the planning board. They did still have some things that they needed to submit that we had discussed and emailed about, and that was a third-party engineering statement that the road design and construction is safe, and then also their actual bonding for all of their improvements in their entire subdivision, which totals out to $782,164.33. And I did review their bonding. They sent down an itemized list of everything to be bonded and how much that should be, and that's all in the subdivision ordinance, and there is a list of what is to be bonded in the subdivision ordinance as well that I emailed them and talked with them about. And so they have now submitted both the bond and the road report that they needed, the statement regarding the roads. And so at this time, they have submitted everything required by the subdivision ordinance for approval of the plat. And just to give you an idea, the Western Puma Council of Governments does have a school growth estimation model they run. Taylor Delling-Juret, the COG specifically, is the one who runs it. And again, this is 1,000 acres, or 1,002 acres technically, when it's all complete, and 267 lots currently. And again, they are bringing in a plat for those final 10 lots when they finish repairing the culvert or certify that its elevation has been brought up to its previous state. And once they do that, I guess they'll have 277 lots instead of 267. But the school growth estimation analysis estimates that if the whole subdivision fills out, there may be 42 new students at Baiton Elementary School, and 22 new students at Hudson Middle School, and 28 students at South Caldwell High. And given that information, that they have now submitted their bond and also their engineering statement that the road design and construction is safe, the planning board does recommend approval of this final plat. And I didn't know if anybody had any questions or anything.
I know we were, we had a problem or questions about the back entrance they're using. Did you get that straightened out, or did anybody get that straightened out?
They did. They were working with DOT on it, and they changed it to Goat Farm Road, and they did get approval from DOT. I'm not sure what concerns DOT had about their plan originally for the Baiton Road. I mean, it met the requirements of a subdivision ordinance, but they do have to get DOT permits per our subdivision ordinance, and they were working on that for this final phase, and they did get the DOT permit.
Is that the Carpenter Road side?
Oh, no, that's the.
That's what we was talking about.
Oh, Carpenter Road?
Yeah.
They, yeah, they had an access issue getting to the culvert to repair it, and they were using Carpenter Road, and they may want to speak to that. I mean, the residents said that they were using Carpenter Road without a right-of-way, but they said they did have a right-of-way. When I went to the culvert site to check that it was taken out, I just went through the front entrance instead of using Carpenter Road, but they do have DOT permission for their Goat Farm exit and their Connolly Springs Road entrance.
And that's on the same side as our convenience site.
Bart, did y'all get that taken care of on the Carpenter Road?
Well, we had our attorney do a title search, and what he concluded is it was, it was never, when Carpenter Road was built, there was really never a deed recorded for So he came up with his opinion that we did have the right to use it because I guess Crescent has used it for the last 40, 50 years to maintain that access.
Did you get it gravelled and get those collapsed rings we talked about?
We did it once in the past, and once all the equipment gets out of there, we're going to go back in and fix it again.
So I will say this, you promised me you'd be out by October.
Yes, yes, they're still working. They're behind schedule. It'll be out by October.
Is that the culvert that went in unapproved and taking it out and fixing it? That's the culvert we're speaking of?
Correct.
Yeah, the issue is they were using Carpenter Road to access it because it's, I guess it's closer and easier to get in than it is to come through the other way, taking the heavy equipment on their already paved roads. Some of the citizens complained on Carpenter Road about them, there's a small, I guess just a couple of areas where there's some drain pipe that the equipment's gone across and has collapsed, and so the water backs up, and Mr. Shaw, Bart, assured me that, first of all, the equipment will be out by October and that they would get that pipe fixed and get that road re-gravelled, so.
And we, I went in, after we spoke, went and spoke to one of the neighbors and looked at the pipe. I could not see, but I told him that I would have our, kind of one-man operation go in behind them, and they have finished all the culvert, all that, all that. The culvert's been taken out, repaired, and those guys are out of there. It's just getting, the road construction was supposed to be done by now, and he's not complete.
Now, it's my understanding, David, you may, can chime in on this, the email I got from Stan basically was pretty clear that your attorney said that you did not have the right to be on Carpenter Road. Is that, am I misinterpreting that?
I don't know anything about any time work on Carpenter Road.
Okay. I was thinking that email came from you to back and forth.
It came from their attorney to either Shelley or me, and then I forwarded it to you.
I got you. Was that your understanding on the stand that?
Their attorney said that they did not have access to it. Is that not right, Bart?
No, he said that, I've got it, and I could share it, but he did say that we did have access. What he was saying is there was never any, there was never an easement for anyone recorded on that for Carpenter Road.
The way I read it, anybody would have easement, you could drive over, but you wouldn't have legal access to it.
Yeah, so like.
What he was saying.
Yes, when all the lots were subdivided on the Crescent property and our neighbors, there was never an easement for anyone that was, that was, I guess, back 30 years ago when this was done, it was not required, or they just didn't do it. So there's really no, no one back there really has the correct access that they showed. It's just a road that's been used for 30 years, so now that we've got our road done, all the interior lots you're going to access from the interior of the neighborhood, but we will have eventually some acreage that fronts Carpenter Road, and we just want to sell this large tract of land.
When are you anticipating on having that equipment out of there? I mean, you told me you were very adamant about you would definitely have it out by, no later than October the 1st.
Yeah. When do you think? Well, just having to go through Carpenter Road.
We'll be done, we should have access. The current development for Phase Three, we shouldn't need access via Carpenter Road, probably for the rest of the project. The only time we'll need access for Carpenter Road is to put the culverts back in.
Well, I can tell you that, me personally, my vote and decision will depend on your answer to whether you fulfill your commitment to having that equipment out and being off Carpenter Road. I'm not trying to be ugly, but, I mean, these are citizens that we have to take care of here in the county, and you guys are going to come in and you're going to build and you're going to do your thing, and you're going to be gone. So I'd like to know when you're going to have that equipment out and be off of Carpenter Road.
Can we connect it? Does it go in and out? It's the Clomar and the Lomar and the Corv engineers.
But as far as the rest of the road, can we just end tonight, go back on it?
No, I mean, if you're talking about Phase Three development, I'd say by the end of the year, Phase Three development, but then there's the culverts themselves, which are Carpenter Road and the Stafford Creek and that chunk of land is actually not part of this plat. It's been carved out, so it'll be a subsequent phase to Phase Three. So here tonight, we're really talking about Phase Three, but in regards to Carpenter Road, which will be a future plat, to put the culverts back in, there's a whole Clomar process with the Corv engineers, approval to put the culverts back in, prosthetes, dot the i's. That process could be a year out, but as relates to the Phase Three construction that we're approving here tonight, that work should be completed by the end of the year.
So I'm not sure you answered my question. Will you be, when will you be off of Carpenter Road? Because he told me October the 1st, and then you were going, you were going to fix those pieces of pipe, and you were going to re-gravel that road.
When will we need to quit using access on Carpenter?
Heavy-duty construction access, assuming we can bring the culverts, the box culverts have been pulled out of the creek. They're sitting there right off of Carpenter Road.
I saw, I saw.
Just to finish the road, what we're trying to do right now.
We'll finish the road by the end of the year for Phase Three, but for Carpenter Road to put the culverts back in, assuming we can access it from the neighborhood, we might not ever have to use Carpenter Road again, assuming we can get to it from inside the neighborhood. If we can't, to put the culverts back in, I don't know how long that Clomar process is, but.
Well, what about finishing road for Smith's Construction?
By the end of the year.
But that's still, you need to use Carpenter Road.
They don't have to use Carpenter Road.
No, 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 just to finish off. They don't have to use Carpenter Road. Just so you think, so we're not going to use Carpenter Road at all?
No.
Until we have to put the box back in. We can say that we're, okay. We could, what we can say is to finish off what we're trying to do, what you see tonight on the actual roads, we can access from the interior of the site and not run over Carpenter Road. But what Jack's saying is a year, a year and a half from now, we're going to have to put those boxes back in.
So they have to go back in there on that road?
Perhaps. The good news is we won't be hauling materials in at that time. All the materials are on site that we'd need to put those boxes back in.
Why can't you access it through your road, through your neighborhood that you have?
At there, we probably could. It's not a condition of the pavement or the grades or anything like that. Given that all the materials are on site currently, that we would need to put the culverts back in, I would think we probably could, actually.
Well, I guess what I'm asking you guys is, while I understand that you're looking to try to do everything as conveniently as possible, and I understand you may think you have legal access to that road, there's some, some theory there that you may not, so it's not my job to determine whether you are or whether you don't. My job as a local county commissioner is to protect our citizens in this county, and it's important to me that you guys be good neighbors, and that's all I'm asking you to do, and that's all they're asking you to do. If you're going to use that road, and it's a, it's a dirt road, it ain't got much gravel left on it, is to try to maintain that road over the time you're using it. I mean, you guys got, I'm sure you got, you know, y'all are pretty wealthy between the whole organization. Surely the goodness you can find enough money in your budget to put some gravel on that road and show some, show some good neighbor intentions by graveling that road since you're going to use it. I just don't think that's too much to ask, you know? And if you guys will do that, I'll do what I can to help you, but if you're not willing to, to tonight, to commit to getting that gravel, getting that pipe fixed, and getting that road gravel, then I'm not going to vote for your, your request, not going to support your request. And I'm not trying to be ugly, but I've got to protect the citizens of my county.
Yeah, I think that's a reasonable request, and we'll absolutely put her, I can fix it immediately. Yeah, no question. We agree.
And again, it's my point, just, just be a good neighbor.
Absolutely. We certainly want to be.
It don't matter who's right and who's wrong. They see you guys as big developers, and you kind of get a bad rap as it is because you're a big developer, right? So try to be, just try to be good neighbors.
Understood.
I'm good, Chairman.
All righty. Anybody else got some questions or concerns? And I just want to clarify with you, Shelley, they have met all the standard that you've put forth up to this point now, and?
That is correct. They've met, so I go strictly off the subdivision ordinance, and at this time, they have met all of those requirements. Some of them were kind of recently, but yes, they have met them.
As recent as today?
No, not as recent as today. But that's the, they're working on the culvert today. But some are pretty recent. The planning board did adopt a contingency statement that they would only recommend approval if those two items were received, so they have submitted those items now.
And they have been received.
Mm-hmm.
All right, and so you're good?
Yeah, because I just go by the ordinance and, you know, work with the planning board on that as well, and that is, the staff recommendation was approval if they have everything in, and that is the planning board recommendation as well, so.
So I do have one more quick question. Wasn't there two, wasn't there like two drain manhole covers or spots or something in a cul-de-sac that you had some concerns about originally? There was some discussion about that. I don't remember specifically what it was, but it seemed like there was two places that you had some concerns about.
I'm not sure what that would be referencing, but they are still working on the culvert situation. They got the culvert out, but they have to just show, and they did submit.
I think this was a DOT, it was something to do with meeting DOT standards.
I'm not sure what you mean. It came up on some of the lots, making sure we didn't have too many flag lots in the road.
Yeah, oh, flag lots, yeah.
That's what it was. That's exactly what it was.
What we did is one, it's just deceptive because those lots are so big, so one of the lots actually has enough frontage to not be a flag lot, but.
I've got you. So they got that resolved, and you're comfortable with all that?
Yeah, because they, there is a requirement in the subdivision ordinance that only 5% of the subdivision can be flag lots, and there has to be a 45-foot street frontage for the flag lots, and they do meet that requirement, so.
All right.
All right. Anybody else? Well, hearing none, I'll call the question of, or get a motion of the adoption of this Phase Three Final Platte Approval as has been presented and gone through the planning board and met their recommendations, and everything is on task to be completed, except for that one 10-lot section, I guess.
Exactly. They'll have to submit an additional, a final plat because they did already get their preliminary plat approved for those 10 lots once they finish the culvert. their preliminary plat approved for those 10 lots once they finish the culvert fixing. So they'll have to submit a final plat for those lots. And I guess they're thinking about doing that in the near future because they were referencing a year. So, yeah, so they'll have to resubmit another plat for that, dividing that land in particular, after they have submitted their elevation for the revised culvert area, and they're probably going to obviously try to get a culvert permitted legally in that area.
All right. And who, who will permit that culvert?
So they will have to contact us. That was the issue the first time. They didn't contact us. They just, the culvert was put in, and then there was flooding. It wasn't done properly, and so then they had to remedy that. And they did appeal that decision and everything, but lost that appeal because they were violating the ordinance, and they have now removed the culvert. And as of today, they sent me a note that includes information referencing a report I'm going to read, but the last thing they have to do with the culvert is prove that they have put it back to its original elevation per the floodplain maps. So they're, yeah, they're in the process of doing that.
Okay.
And, and I will say this, guys, just to kind of give you an idea. First of all, I appreciate what you guys are doing from the development standpoint, but I also want you to know that we have these rules in place for a reason. You know, years ago, obviously before any of our time, we didn't do a very good job of planning and developing and things the way they should have been done. And this board has made a pretty strong commitment to make sure that at least while we're here, we're going to try to do whatever's developed, we're going to try to do it right, so we protect the future of the people of this county. Because I can show you developments, I live in one that probably, you know, could have been done a little bit differently. So that's kind of why, I know you think sometimes it's a little difficult and you got to meet these different elements and things, but that's why, because we, we want to make sure it's done right for the future and for the people who have to live here long after we're gone.
All right. Well, do I hear a motion that we adopt this Phase Three final plat?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we adopt the waterfront Phase Three final plat.
All right. Any other comment or discussion? I'll call the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries unanimously. So thank you, and thank you, Shelley.
Thank you.
For keeping us straight.
Thanks, Shelley.
Thank you.
All right. Next on our agenda is our building inspection position request. Our county manager, Mr. Dan Kaiser.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, we have two building inspectors that are planning to retire in the next year or so, and we ask that you create two new positions so we can bring two people on, get them trained up and ready to go when these fellows retire. Once they do retire, their positions will not be rehired, so it'll only be a year or so that we'll have two extra positions, but this will make for a smooth transition in the department, and we ask for your approval.
I have a motion that we approve it.
Commissioner Brants makes the motion, we approve it. And I, I only have one question, and I'm good with it, but do we know that they're going to retire in a year? Because we got caught in that here a while back, and somebody stayed on for about three years.
Well, I think, Jimmy, they've, they've, I know one's indicated to you, what is it, June the 30th of next year?
The other one, I'm not sure, but he has indicated in a year or so, so.
Didn't we sort of decide on this too, we was going to try to hire one younger one and go out and try to find one more experienced one?
That's my understanding.
Well, what we've got in there is a building code inspector one and a building code inspector three, so we were going to try to hire someone who's already up to the top standards, and then someone else to hire who we can train.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure it takes about six years to get to that third level anyway, so they got to have some experience to be that level three to begin with.
Correct.
So does our, our pay, pay scales reflect that, too? Because we just went through this same thing with environmental health, and we remember that, trying to hire somebody and, and getting qualified folks. So Jimmy's coming, I guess.
He acts like he wants to come.
We've got the scale and set, and we've actually got that in there for you, so you can see the, the hiring rates and everything for the, the two different positions. Our hope is to get the level three inspector hired. Hopefully, we can-
Have we got a Plan B?
Yeah. Plan B is hiring the level one and training them. That's going to be the, the whole shot, but hopefully we can take and get a level three. I, I think we can get a level three inspector, get somebody to come.
And I want to point out, too, this is very important for economic development.
Oh, yeah.
If you get to the point, you can't get inspections done, then you've, you'll have a bottleneck.
That's right.
And we've got the range set there, and certainly we, if we get somebody, we can, we can address that.
Okay, long as we got some range to work with.
And you know, I think we've been spoiled on this because we've had some really good building inspectors for a long time, and it's a partner that most contractors and everybody gets along really well with, and, you know, we, and we've sort of forgot about them because it's all went so well, and now it's time to pay the price, so.
Well, hopefully, they'll be an influence on the new folks we hire and show them good customer service skills.
Yes, sir. All right, so we have a motion. Any other comment or question? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that carries unanimously. So thank you for looking forward for us, too.
Thank you, Jimmy. Stan?
Next is our consent agenda, and again, our county manager, Mr. Dan Kaiser.
First of all, we have the approval of the minutes from the September 14th, 2020 meeting. We ask for your approval of a Golden Leaf Grant application for a meat processing facility. This requires no county dollars. A budget revision, the Health Department WIC Agreement addendum, $8,580. Budget revision for the Health Department CARES Act Agreement addendum, $110,898. Again, a budget revision, Health Department PPP and Healthcare Enhancement Act grant, $19,089. Budget revision for mowing expense, $63,515. Budget revision for the rural tan road water line extension, $20,000. A budget revision for JCPC reimbursement to the state for unspent funds of $785.54. Budget revision for the Sheriff's Department COVID-19 grant expenditures of $32,335.75. Budget revision for the Sheriff's Department of $14,557 for a 25% county match to fund internet predator prevention position awarded through a grant. That was $58,225 for the grant. We ask for your approval of a letter to support for Scream Half Marathon to be held on December the 5th, 2020. They will also be checking with the Sheriff's Department on that. We ask for your approval of a letter of support and $100,000 matching grant for the Great Grant Application to bring fiber optic internet to the northern Caldwell County. Your approval of a resolution for installment financing contracts to refinance county loans that will save us quite a bit of money over the next 14 years, and your approval of Caldwell County School Board Resolution to dispose of the Oak Hill School property and reject the officer, the offer of first refusal to purchase.
All right. And hearing the recommendations of our manager on the consent agenda, do I hear a motion that we approve?
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept this evening's consent agenda as the county manager has presented.
Any other comment or discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. And before we adjourn this evening, I did want to mention, as a public service announcement, if you will, but early voting starts on October the 15th and runs through October the 31st, and then our election day will be on November the 3rd, and so we encourage everyone, as your right to vote, to go out and vote and make your voice be heard. We've got all the COVID precautions and necessary things in order for our Board of Elections, and our early voting site in the city of Lenore is at our Caldwell County Resource Center located on Hospital Drive, Hospital Avenue. And then the second location will be at the Shuford Recreation Center in Granite Falls. And so those early voting sites open up this coming Wednesday, October the 15th. So I hope that you make your voice be heard when you vote. And with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And we are adjourned. Thank you again for being here and for joining us by TV.